Good evening, welcome to the July 27th meeting of the Bella Vista City Council. Pastor Mark, will you lead us in the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Certainly. Let us pray. Lord God, first of all, we acknowledge your presence here among us tonight. Not because we invoked your presence or asked you to be here, but because you wanted to be here and you are everywhere you want to be. We thank you for that, for your provision, for your protection, for your power, for your providence. And we ask Heavenly Father that you would bless the deliberations and discussions and decisions tonight that are in the best interests of all the good people here of Bella Vista. We thank you that we are able to live in this place and we pray that because of the blessings we have received, that we would be a blessing to one another. And we pray in your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jerkson?
Alderman Anderson?
Here.
Alderman Flynn?
Here.
Alderman King?
Here.
Alderman Morgan?
Here.
Alderman Wozniak?
Here.
Alderman Wilson?
Here.
All present. Thank you. We'll move on to public input. Pastor Mark.
Thank you. You probably know that our church is building a beautiful new facility out on Forest Hills Boulevard, Highway 279, north of Casey's. And also, next to us, just to the north of us, the city is building a new firehouse and also on Forest Hills Boulevard there, 279, and it's anticipated at some point in the not-too-distant future, there's going to be a home for crisis, women in crisis pregnancy that could be built on the right-hand side across from the firehouse, couple of acres there, I know it's being talked about. Anyway, there's more development on that area and our concern is for the current speed limit on that road and also because of the curves on that road and there's going to be more traffic coming in and out of those drives. And I don't know who it is, it's a state highway, so my guess is the state determines the speed limits, but perhaps input from the appropriate people in the city could be made to request a review of the speed limit in that area for the sake of not only folks coming in and out of the church drives and Buxton, which will get busier, but also the firehouse. Would appreciate any help we could get from the city.
I'm meeting with state on August the 19th, I'll bring it up.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Olson. Good evening.
Hello. I'm Fred Olson. We're new residents, like about a month on Carter Circle, and go back and forth on Trafalgar Lot, and I just wanted to make sure if somebody knew about the round depression in the middle of the eastbound lane there and I believe Herschley Street. We hit a pretty good lap on that one day before we knew about it. Thank you.
Can you describe one more time on Trafalgar, sir, where that is?
It's just past Barbour as you're going east.
Just past, okay.
Yeah, it would be as you're going down the road, I've seen it, I'd go that way. It's about three feet in from the center lane. It's a nice round hole and somebody was nice enough to put a white circle around it. Been there about a month. It's about three, three and a half inches deep, you know you hit it when you hit it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Olson. I'll probably get this wrong because I'm having trouble reading it. Chris and Katie Vaughn? Mark?
Van Noe.
Thank you.
Close.
Close. If you could use the mic, please, sir?
A lot of us are on one issue, sir.
Okay.
I want to defer to Morris Wall. Use the microphone, please.
Okay. You gotta go to the microphone. So you'll speak on behalf of everybody, sir?
I'll do that, but I'll lay the issuing.
Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to address the council. My name is Morris Wall, I'm here with my wife Nicole van Oots and Larry DeBoos, and we're here to talk about building code enforcement. For the past eighteen months or so, there's been a home under construction at 13 Dunbarton Drive. There are people living in the home and there's been no permanent certificate of occupancy issued for that house yet. The house is strewn with litter, with piles of wood, there is exposed electrical wiring in back of the house, there is an unfinished deck, the owner of the home has been issued a number of temporary occupancy certificates, in the meantime, but has done nothing since he has physically occupied the premises some eight months ago to complete proper code compliance on the house. There are safety issues that we have in the neighborhood, and there are also quite frankly issues about the property values that this unsightly piece of property is causing. We have reached out to the city officials on multiple occasions over the past eighteen months, I have, my wife has, Chris and Katie has, Larry has. We keep being told that it's being taken care of, that the owner of the property is going to comply and do what needs to be done, and here we are today roughly eighteen months after construction started and roughly eight months after the occupant, the owner occupant moved into the house, and there is no compliance. Again, we're concerned about safety, we're concerned about property values, we want to ask the council to please look into this and see to it that the proper regulations are enforced.
Good. Mr. Sonnison, are you aware of this property?
Yes, sir, I'm looking at it, I'm in a family system.
Okay. We will, yes, have someone look at it. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, sir. Sir?
My name is Chris Van Noe, my wife Katie is sitting over there. We moved to Bella Vista roughly two and a half years ago, built a home on Dunbarton Place. One of the reasons we moved to this area was I was concerned that we build a piece of property and somebody would not be able to build in our area, not in, we'd have enforced codes. Looking at this property, I can't imagine that the codes are being followed in this situation. If they are, my concern is, is that one year from now, five years from now, ten years from now, what's Bella Vista going to look like? And I know, Mayor, you've made a comment in the weekly paper about, and I'm paraphrasing, I'll probably be inaccurate, that you weren't going to stand for this.
No, I'm not.
And I hope that's the truth because it is a concern that when you drive down Dunbarton, nice homes in the area, this is one of the first homes you see, well, the first home you see is Larry's, and that's very nice. Second home you see on the left-hand side is this home. And I would be nervous if I was selling my home and somebody came down and looked at that home and said, wow, is this what the neighborhood looks like?
Thank you. I really do appreciate that. Mr. Sonnison, will you see me in the morning, please, about this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for coming this evening and bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Are we able to keep the pictures? Great. Thanks. Thank you. Before I close, public input, anybody else have anything they'd like to say? More than welcome to do so. Alrighty, thank you, we'll move along.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night. Okay, we have three sets of minutes to approve, all of which are in your packet. So we'll start with the, if I can pull it up here. There we are, the June 22nd, regular city council meeting, are there any errors or omissions? If not, I would ask for approval by show of hands, all those in favor?
Sorry? Mayor, you need to have a motion in a second.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you. Now we'll do the show of hands, in favor? Against? Carries, thank you. Next one is July the 2nd. This was a special city council meeting, if you remember, this was to authorize additional expenditures for the re-roofing of the police department. Are there any errors or omissions?
Recommend approval as presented.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Approval by show of hands, all in favor? Against? Thank you. And then finally, we move to a special meeting that was held on the 20th. Alderman Flynn was mayor pro tem while I was on vacation, and this was approving an amendment to the construction management contract with NavHoltz to facilitate the purchase of pre-engineering metal building for the street department. Entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, second, thank you. Again, all in favor, show of hands? Against? Thank you, they carried. The next is mine, Mr. Sonnison. And we'll cover off on the financials. The first is the revenue. I'll call your attention to the general operating budget first, which is the orange and yellow if it's coming up that way behind me, sometimes it plays tricks. For the month of June, the revenue was 37.7,000 favorable, and most of that was the county sales tax, which exceeded expectations by 36. The street department was unfavorable by 207,000. There had been a transfer of 400,000 budgeted to cover shortfall, however, this was not required due to the fire insurance payment that we received in May. That doesn't mean that we won't need it in the future, but it was prudent this time not to move that over. If we go to the expenses, which is the next slide, again, the general operating account, that's the blue and the orange, we were 12K unfavorable, and that was for the most part fire equipment expense of $14,000. If you go to the streets department, which is, the budget is in the gray and the actual is in the yellow, we were 287,000 favorable, and that's basically a timing issue that's reflected for the resurfacing projects which will occur in July. We've had an awful lot of rain, so we couldn't start. You may have read the article in this morning's paper, the county's in the same boat, just about everybody is when I talk to the other mayors. And then there was some equipment that wasn't spent, and again, that's a timing issue as well. Our reserve is healthy, it continues to grow thanks to the foundation of the previous council and mayor. We're now at 8.2 million, and we have a year-to-date net income of 2.5 million. You will note that at the outset of this presentation, Mr. Sonnison, if you could back up to the cover, there's a new logo that's showing there, that is being announced on Wednesday, and there is a full article hopefully coming out in the weekly Vista, Mr. Howard? Right?
Yes, all the heads go like this?
And it's actually going to explain what the new logo is conveying and some of the history that's being maintained, such as the use of the dog with flour. A great deal of thought and citizen involvement went into this. I would go and make a speech somewhere and I'd pull all four documents out and say, which one do you like? And this was the one by far that won. And then we tweaked it some more based on some of the input that we've had. So you'll see that coming up. And then there's a tagline, "A Place to Call Home." It originally said, "A Place to Come Home To." The problem with that is we had a dangling preposition standing on the end, and being an English major, that just didn't quite cut it. So we changed it. The good news that all the work done on this logo was done free of charge for us by Scott Elkins and his team with Elkins Consulting in Bentonville. Okay. You'll notice on your packet this evening, Alderman, that there is one item that is not on it that was on the working meeting, and that's the Obamacare reporting. We are still working on the contractual wording with some of the vendors. Mr. Kelly had a chance to look over it, and we have sent his comments off to the vendor this morning. For those of you that may not be aware, along with the ADA, the Affordable Healthcare Act, comes the heavy burden of the reporting that goes with it on the back end for your taxes. And we, and every other company that has more than 50 employees, has a great deal of paperwork that has to be filled in, calculations that have to be done. It's got to the point where we actually have to engage a company to help us or hire somebody, it's cheaper to engage somebody and tie them into our payroll system. So that's what this is all about. It will be coming back once again, either with this particular vendor, or we may go out and seek another one that has more favorable terms in their contract. We are speaking with the municipal league because they too are backing this particular vendor, so we want to make sure that we have a good contract. So stand by for more. Moving along. Alrighty. I would entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read all proposed ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Mr. Jerkson?
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Carries, six.
Thank you. The first piece of business is actually a second reading. "Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista by Adding Article III Vehicle Towing to Chapter 26 Traffic and Vehicles to Comply with State Law Concerning the Annual Reporting of Towing and Storage Rates." This will move to third reading at the next council meeting. Before I move on, is there any discussion? Okay, the next one is an ordinance authorizing borrowing funds pursuant to Arkansas Constitutional Amendment 78 for the acquisition of a 2015 KME custom pumper fire truck by issuance of a promissory note, providing for security for the repayment of the promissory note, providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on the note, and then declaring an emergency and for other purposes. This is a fire truck, Chief Sims, that you've been watching to build. It looks as though we may be as short as 30 days away now, they had always said perhaps August or September, and in our discussion this morning, you were saying that the cab has been built, that's the most complex part, so now it looks as though we could indeed get it within the next 30 days, is that correct? Okay. Is there any discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The total this note is for?
It'll be 313,000. Sir?
Well, I'd just like to point out the citizen rate, that I believe this is a prudent deal for the city because it helps our cash flow, spreads the payment over five years, and the interest rate is 1.85%, which is very favorable.
Very true, thank you. So we vote on this one, counselor, and then I move to third? Oh, I'm sorry.
Recommend suspension of the rules and moving this particular ordinance to third reading.
Thank you.
Second.
Second? Okay, so we're going to vote now on the motion to suspend and move to third.
Okay. Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Carries, six.
Thank you. I'll now read for the third time, "Authorizing Borrowing Funds Pursuant to Arkansas Constitutional Amendment 78 for the Acquisition of a 2015 KMN Custom Pumper Fire Truck by Issuance of a Promissory Note, Providing for Security for the Repayment of the Promissory Note, Providing for the Payment of the Principal of and Interest on the Note, and Declaring an Emergency and for Other Purposes." Is there any discussion? Okay. Motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
That was a motion to approve and a second?
Right, okay. Mr. Jerkson? Okay.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Carries, six.
Thank you. Given the urgency and that we might receive the truck within the next 30 days, I would ask for a motion to invoke an emergency clause, please.
So moved.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Yep. Mr. Jerkson?
Alderman Wozniak?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman King?
Yes.
Alderman Wilson?
Yes.
Alderman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderman Flynn?
Yes.
Carries, six.
Thank you. For the next ordinance, I'm now going to move council into a public hearing, and the ordinance reads as follows. "Annexing lands completely surrounded by the municipal limits of Bella Vista and the city of Grabot and for other purposes." Is there any public input to this ordinance? Seeing that there is none, I will close the public hearing. There is no further action until the next council meeting per law, counselor, I believe it says, 30 days?
Yes, sir. So this is, it'll be on first reading at your next regular meeting.
Alrighty, thank you. We'll move on to the next ordinance? Excuse me. This is "Amending Section 20-3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to Modify the Permissible Time Periods for Usage of Fireworks and for Other Purposes." If you look in your package, you can actually see the change in times. We currently have June 27th to July the 11th for private fireworks, and we are going to be reducing that to July 3rd to the 5th, you can see the new hours. This does not include the public display that is hosted by the city. That will continue to have those dates so that we're able to accommodate fire bans, possible inclement weather, and still be able to shoot the fireworks with our fire department standing right beside us as we do it. So this is only for personal fireworks. Is there any discussion?
I've been contacted by several residents concerning this and their concern, and I am especially thankful to Fred and Liz Herman, who actually supplied us, I mean, we, I was about ready to go online and get them, but they very neatly outlined the days of cities around us and the days that they do. And when we came up with 15 days over two to five days in other cities, I appreciate the work that they put into this, and I certainly think it's something we need to do.
Thank you. Chief, I understand that you were getting some calls as well coming into dispatch, talking about the noise?
Yes, we did. 16, 17 flights this year, which is substantially increased as we're walking on like that.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
What are the new dates, Mayor?
I'm sorry?
What are the new dates?
The new date is from the 3rd to the 5th, which is pretty much in line with all the other cities, Pastor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I'd like to add, and there's also a New Year's Eve provision in there.
Yes, there is.
December 31.
Yeah.
Right.
That hasn't changed. So this will now move to second reading? Okay?
So moved.
Alrighty. Moving right along. We now move to the first resolution of the evening. Excuse me. "Autorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk to Enter Into a Contract with Mercy Health Northwest Arkansas Communities, DVA Mercy Clinic Northwest Arkansas Communities for the Creation of a Community Paramedic Program." There is an explanation in your package, but Chief Sims, I'm going to ask if you can give us a thumbnail overview of the program, please?
This program is something we've been talking about for a little over a year now, closer to probably a year and a half, with Mercy Health Systems. It's a program that's going to be pilot with Mercy, with the fire department, that's going to, it's more or less a partnership with them. We had to pick a healthcare facility that could track the patients that are coming out there, there are high-acuity patients that we're taking in by ambulance to the hospital. And what it's going to do, it's going to allow us to get into the hospital, or the house, residents of these patients that went in by ambulance, and be able to kind of follow up with them as they get out of the hospital, you know, especially the ones that are, you know, post-cardiac patients, post-heart failure patients, you know, patients on medications or patients that are, what they see as, might be a patient that could be readmitted back into the hospital. Okay? We had to pick them with this, you know, partnership, and Mercy was the one that kind of come to the table for us, and I want everybody to understand it is a partnership, it's a pilot program. We can stop this within 30 days, I believe, of the pilot program at any time. But we see this as a very good and benefit to the citizens of Bella Vista. Not only are we going to be in there and making sure they understand our discharge instructions, we're also going to be doing fall prevention, we're going to be doing fire safety, which we feel like that's a very part of our, important part of our job, is fire and ambulance. So that's basically what we're going to be doing with Mercy. We're going to do this for a year, see how the program goes, and then hopefully, if it benefits Mercy and benefits the fire department, there'll be some other things come out of the program with it.
And this program, I understand, has been used elsewhere in the country quite successfully?
That's correct. There's several, with one of them being, the largest one is Texas, it's called MedStar, it's out of the Dallas-Fort Worth area, and they've been using it for probably a couple of years now and have great success with the program. It's allowing the paramedics to go in, like I said, and doing these home visits, to let, to make sure we can keep people out of hospital for one, and we just feel like it's going to be a benefit to everybody in the community. Right now, Mercy, I have five paramedics that are trained currently, and Mercy has footed the bill for that through their grant program. It's a little over $12,000 they put forth to do the extra training for the paramedics. We also have a $14,000 grant to cover several things like mileage for the use of our vehicles and so forth going in, fire extinguishers, smoke detectors, some of the weight scales we'll need to weigh people as they come out to make sure they're not retaining fluid. So there's, they're basically footing the bill for the first part of this program. What we're going to be doing is allowing our medics into the home, they're going to be on shift, just like they are, they're going to be used for other purposes as well, but they'll be going in from shift, doing the shift work, and then going into their home, and then going back to work on the same day. So it's not, it's not really changing any other hours of the paramedics, they're still going to be doing the fire and EMS like they're doing, we're just taking a few hours out of the day to hopefully keep the resident from calling ambulance back.
What about year two and the funding going forward?
With year two, we're going to look at the data and statistics that they gather, Mercy gathers, and what the fire department gathers, and hopefully with some of their savings from the readmissions into the hospital and their customer care evaluations, hopefully we'll be able to recoup some of that back to the city through another agreement or contract.
Okay. Any questions for the chief?
I do have a question. When you spoke to us last Monday night, I got the impression that this took place until home health care could come in, which they don't do just absolutely immediately. Would this continue any services even after home health comes in?
Generally, what she's mentioned here, it takes them 24 to 72 hours for home health care will come into the home, and that is, that is true. After home health care takes over, then we'll back out and we'll go to the next patient. So we won't be doing anything above the home health, once home health care is Once home health care's in there, then we step back and they go ahead and take on the rest of the care.
Thank you.
With that.
Any other questions for the chief? Any discussion? Thank you, chief. I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution, please.
So moved. Second.
Second? Mr. Jerkson? Did you get the?
Excuse me. Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Carrie Six.
Thank you. Next resolution in your package. "Expressing the Willingness of the City of Bella Vista to Utilize Federal Aid Transportation Alternatives Program Funds Administered by the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission for the Reardon Road Trailhead Project." Mr. Sunnison?
Thank you, Mayor. As part of a federal funding application for matching funds on a trail project, the city is required to endorse through a resolution the willingness to participate in that program. What you have on the screen in front of you is a conceptual design by folks in the planning, I'm sorry, the Community Development Services Department for Trailhead at the western extremity of the flat portion of Reardon. It's just before you start going straight up the hill. The idea would be for this to be kind of a terminus between paved trails as well as soft-surface trails going further to the west. It is a trailhead, so we're providing parking and a connection into what will eventually be an extension of the Razorback Greenway as called for in the Trails and Greenway Master Plan. At the moment, we're looking at this project at a $398,000 price tag. Eighty percent of that would be through federal funds. And we would be making an application in a two-year funding cycle with regional planning for construction in 2017.
Mr. Sunnison, this would also be the trailhead that would be used to terminate Phase One of the extension of the Razorback from the tip of the lake?
I'm not sure how many phases that's going to take, but yes, that would be the eventual connection.
Are there any questions, concerns, discussion? I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Jerkson?
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Carrie Six.
Thank you. The next resolution is a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Bella Vista to apply for SDPA funding for preliminary engineering and environmental assessment for the Mercy Way Bridge and corridor improvements and other purposes. Mr. Sunnison, this is yours again.
Thank you, Mayor. As with the last federal funding program, this is a different pot of money, but also takes that endorsement from the city council regarding the willingness to participate with those funds. The project that you see in front of you on the screen is a four, five-lane expansion of Mercy Way from the intersection near the school and to the west across Mercy, or Little Sugar Creek. The creek and bridge would necessarily be expanded with that project, and it is envisioned that we have connections into the future extension of the Razorback Greenway with this project for pedestrian accommodations along the alignment. It would also look at improving the intersection of, I'm going to try and get all these roads right, Lambeth, Blowing Springs, Dartmoor, and Mercy Way. The project cost on this is estimated to be 3.5, 3.2 million. What we are applying for, as expressed in the resolution, is for preliminary engineering and environmental clearance. That comes to the tune of about $320,000, if I remember the cost correctly, of which 80% would be reimbursed through the federal matching program, and about $64,000 would be the 20% share for the city. This is a competitive grant program, and we're seeking the council's endorsement to move forward with this project.
You and I were chatting about the project, and it appears that it's been perhaps pushed out?
Yeah. What has occurred is that because of a lengthy selection process for consultants, the city had previously been awarded funding for this project. But because of that lengthy consultant selection process through the highway department, we're unable to obligate these federal monies. And we're not the only community in this boat. We have projects in Rogers and Fayetteville that also are suffering the same crisis of getting things funded. So what we have been encouraged to do through regional planning is to continue to move forward with the project by reapplying for additional funding that will be transferred, that is essentially lost to the city, and transferred to another project that has been slated through that process.
When would you think this would start? And the whole project to be completed by, is that now up to 2020?
At the very least. We are on, again, a two-year cycle for funding applications. So at this point, we put in our 2015 application for obligation in 2017. I'm sorry. Yes, obligation in 2017, so that we have a very long period of getting through that selection process. Those fellows that we end up selecting would then have about a year or so to do design work. And then, then we know kind of a price tag on what this bridge really does zero in on in future dollars. And then we make another grant application for construction funding in about a two-year cycle.
So by passing this, it in no way obligates the city?
That is correct. We, the resolution that you have in front of you allows us to proceed with an application. That said, if the monies are obligated, awarded, if you will, and then are moved forward with, and we spend those funds, those funds would need to be paid back should the construction not proceed.
Alderman Anderson?
I was just going to mention that. The only obligation is if we don't continue with building the bridge on out into the future, and we probably have eight, nine, 10, 11 years before it would become critical that they would be looking for money back. We would have to pay this money that we're getting from the federal government this time for the design. We owe that back.
True.
But that would be a long time out into the future.
That's true. Thank you. Any further questions?
Would the ultimate construction of the bridge, would that likely end up being an 80/20 type of situation also?
I think that's the best way to proceed. 3.5 million in our budget.
We would certainly try for that.
Yes.
When you're asking for $360,000, it's a lot easier to get. When we begin asking for the three and four million, it may be a little harder to get. And that's why I brought up the fact that if we don't go ahead and build the bridge, we could owe this money back. And there is no guarantee that we will get federal funding to build the bridge.
That's true. Sure. That's true.
Thank you for your questions anymore at all. Any further discussion? I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson, thank you.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Carrie Six.
Thank you. The, yes, the last resolution of the evening is a resolution expressing the willingness of the City of Bella Vista to utilize federal aid transportation alternatives program funds administered by the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission for the Dartmoor Road Hawk Crossing Project. Mr. Sunnison, you again.
I will try to keep it brief, Mayor. This project may be familiar to some of you. It is proposed to be a signalized crosswalk intersection between Cooper Elementary and, I'm going to call them, the gravel parking field on the Northwest Arkansas Lightning Lane on the west side of Dartmoor Road. We have previously applied for statewide tap funding for this project. That's the Transportation Alternatives Program. We have not heard back on that funding source. With the opportunity to apply for other sources of funding on this, I thought it would be wise to move forward with an alternative process to fund it if the statewide funds are not awarded for whatever reason. So the project comes in at about $110,000. Again, 80 to 20% match on this particular grant funding. We have moved forward with construction documents with Alta Consulting, planning and design, I should say. Alta planning and design, that's a major designer of the Razorback Greenway, in order to provide that, I'm going to try and get Hawk right, hybrid-activated crosswalk signal, I think. Is that what we settled on?
Beacon.
Beacon, beacon, I forgot beacon. Regardless. And so this is kind of a backup in case the statewide funding is not available. We would be applying for 2016 construction because honestly, we're about 90% on construction documents at this point in time.
So this is Plan B?
Plan B.
All righty. Any questions, discussion, concerns? If not, sir.
Recommend approval as presented.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Wozniak, thank you. Mr. Jerkson?
Alderman Anderson.
Yes.
Alderman King.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Morgan.
Yes.
Alderman Flynn.
Yes.
Alderman Wozniak.
Yes.
Carrie Six.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings and announcements. The next city council work session will be Monday, August the 17th, at 5:30 in the City Hall Conference Room. The next regular meeting of this council will be Monday, August the 24th, at 6:30, right here in the American Legion Hall. Planning, the Planning Commission work session will be Wednesday, July 29th, at 4:00 PM in the City Hall Conference Room. And the Planning Commission regular meeting will be August the 10th, at 6:30 in the City Hall Conference Room. And the Public Safety Committee meeting will be August the 12th, at 9 o'clock in the morning in the City Hall Conference Room. Is there any further discussion? We are adjourned. Thank you for attending. Good night. [inaudible] Bye, Swatter there. [music][1737.63]